Thank you all very much for giving up on Friday evening to be here when there are calls. We show up. Thank you very much. So, we really only have one topic on our agenda. And we'll follow the procedure and hopefully we will not be here on. So, the meeting is called officially at 5:00 P.M. And we will now have our own call by the county clerk.
You don't have to hit it.
Is that all she is? I guess I don't understand what she means.
She's got a hundred percent.
See if you can shrink it to about seventy-five percent this way.
Mr. Miller right here.
He's not here.
Well, I think she said Randall's coming right in too, so if you want to wait for her.
Commissioner Bailey, do you think you could possibly shrink the screen?
I got to the moment.
Yeah, well, I'm going too.
Just give that boy a round of applause.
You know, they've got it. It's the follow the fire where they turn it up there. It's just one of those just that way or not. So, we change it last week. I'm going to let you some more. It's going to be adjusted up there.
So, since we can't see those votes, are any of our voices up?
Yo.
I'm sorry, Ms. Skid, but we're going to have to.
She can change it on her screen resolution. That's what I said.
Well, that cursor, just pull it over. I'm sure they need.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody's changing the air, change the resolution there.
Yeah, third icon on the top. Sir? What do we do by bigger screens? Move it over that line.
Need a screen, really.
You got them smoking?
You done tried to change this one?
Yeah.
It's up there.
Thank you, Commissioner Bailey.
Willie Campbell.
Here.
Mark Leavins.
Here.
Mark McCutcheon.
Present.
Lindsey Graham.
Here.
Mark Miller. Julie Nguyen.
Here.
Robbie Johnson.
Here.
Mark Castor.
Here.
Charles von Cannon. Isaiah Brianstein.
Here.
Jerry Prophet.
Here.
Austin James.
Here.
Ross Garland.
Here.
Dana Ward.
Here.
Jay Gerholdren.
Here.
Randall Jenkins.
Here.
Jerry Bailey.
Here.
Travis Hill.
Here.
Roger Coller. Daniel McIntyre. Mary Frazier.
Robert McCamie.
Here.
Billy Collins.
Here.
Thomas Prophet.
Here.
Okay, so we have county presidents. Okay, county presidents, so we do have a court president. So, we're down to item three, approval of the agenda. And I need to add a couple of things in here due to the weather conditions. I want to bring up Director Billy Harold to talk to us about what we do with cases of tornado.
That's great.
And that will be the next item after we approve the agenda. I also want to add item six B, please. And that's going to be an introduction of our new communications officer. And Mayor Patty Whitty will be handling that introduction. That's item six B. And then I just want to officially ask if the commission is willing to accept the order of speakers and meeting events that were on your table when you arrived this evening. So, if you'll approve those changes, I'll take that motion now.
I'll take it, sir.
Okay, so a motion, Mark Leavins, second, Robert McCamie. Thank all of you. And now, let's vote on the approval of the agenda. All in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, commission. Now, Director Billy Harold.
Thank you, Ms. Hope. Most of y'all may know that tornado watch right down in Carter County. And we will be till around seven-thirty or eight o'clock tonight. If you do sign up for our emergency alert system, some of y'all may have got that emergency alert through Everbridge today that that did come over. And also, if we do have, if we have to go to a tornado warning, if one is in the area, what we will do, we will all go to the first floor where there's no windows. And I will close the fire doors on both ends. And that's where we will go in case we have a tornado warning. We don't want to stay up high. We want to go down low. So, we will go to the first floor. And we will close those doors till the tornado warning is over. So, thank you, Ms. Hope.
Thank you, Director Harold. We will now have prayer and pledge. The prayer will be led by Commissioner Willie Campbell. The pledge will be led by Commissioner Jerry Bailey.
Praise the heavenly Father, God, who has bowed our heads one more time, Lord, calling from His name. Give you glory for this day that you've given us, another chance to declare defeat to the Lord. Lord, take another breath. God, we do thank you, Lord, for this day, Lord, that you bestowed upon each one of us, Lord. We want to thank you for the prayers and your bashing for each and every one of us, God. Lord, tonight, we know that maybe the storms are raging around us. Or we know that you're in control. We know that you're sitting on the right hand of Father, Lord, making intercession for each one. Lord, tonight, we do pray for this commission, Lord, and each one that's in this building, Lord. They have something up on their hearts, Lord, that you'll touch, Lord, and on them. God, today, we do thank you, Lord, for your presence, for your son, Lord, our Holy Spirit that's in our hearts. God, we just pray that you have the will and way when we ask these things in thy name. Amen.
Say, everybody, no matter how this goes, we live in the greatest country in America, right here in the world. So, I take the pledge of allegiance very seriously. Attention, salute, pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the spirit of the Father, Son, and Son of God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we would like to recognize all of our elected and appointed officials at this. Would you all please stand and let us express our gratitude for your service? Thank you very much. Now, Mayor Whitty, if you will come and do your introduction, please.
Thank you, everyone. I want to thank the commission for allowing us to hire this position in. And we've done our interview process. And I'd like to bring up Mr. Mark Riddings. He is the new communications officer for Carter Pammy. And we're very glad to have him. I'm very pleased to have him here. And I want to turn it over to him and let him give an introduction, a little bit about himself and his education and a little bit of his background.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Thank you for listening to what I have to say here today. I guess I'll start out with my background in communications. I started out in the eighties, right after college. And I got into communications. I started working for Motorola. I worked for Kenwood. I worked for many of the different dealers, many different name brands. There was no preference for me at that time. It was just, at that time, it was a job that I was learning as I went. A lot of learning along the way as I went. My background, I have many, many certifications. I don't have them with me tonight, but I can share those if somebody's wanting to see those certifications. I have taken classes and learned certifications and built upon my knowledge as a radio technician and moved into system design. I also helped one of the engineers with the National Park Service. He's currently still working for the Park Service. And I helped him design a system in Washington, D.C. that contains about seventeen different radio sites as well as a somewhat less radio system. And it's got three channels and also extends all the way up into New York City. So, we've been maintaining and building that system out. There's a lot of other small systems that we've worked on. Some of those include Blue Ridge. Those also include the Big Smoky Mountains. And a new system design of their new system that's actually going in, being put in as we talk. So, enough of my background, I guess. The big reason we're here is to talk about the radio system that you are wanting to put in here in the county and that you have bid on and that there is a recommendation on. That recommendation, I've been reading through the information. I've read through it a couple of times. I've been out to at least one of the sites. I've looked at many of the photographs in the sites. And I've familiarized myself with the system here. And I don't know it all, obviously, because I've only had just a couple of days to actually be boots on the ground and up here looking at it. I understand there's other people that have been here many times looking this over and may know a little bit more about this system or a lot more about this system than I do. But from what I can tell and from what I see in the system and questions I've been asking of several people here.
Mr. Riddings.
Yes.
We actually want your recommendation to come a little bit later, so I'm going to stop you before you actually say it. So, if you don't mind, Ms. Whitty was just introducing you to us right now. And I will call you back a little bit later in the meeting, if that's okay, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Glad to have you. Thank you. Okay, so now, let's move from the regular agenda over to the sheet and follow this order while we're on item number seven. We are going to start tonight's proceedings with questions from the board of commissioners. And they may be directed to either the Communications International Group or Motorola Group. Just get the floor and ask a question in whatever manner you choose. There's no time limit on these commissioners. Ask away. Yes, I'll say it for myself.
This would be from Motorola. Whenever you were here presenting, has it already been a month ago? It hasn't been. Whenever you were here presenting a month ago, one of the questions that we had asked was, or I had asked, was specifically about instead of utilizing radio repeaters in vehicles, what would be the alternative to provide additional coverage to get us up to ninety-five percent and what your recommendation would be? Scott Timbo of Motorola, is this okay to stand here?
Yes, sir.
The recommendation, I mean, to get to that, you'd have to probably add another side.
Thank you. Any other commissioner questions?
Can you explain a little bit more of what exactly that means, what it entails, what?
Right, so, just briefly, so, yeah, so the way we have it set up now, our using, our solution was using existing TAC and state sites. And I can cite it White Rock. If there was an area of coverage that you needed, that to Commissioner's point, in a certain area, we would look at another site alternative and put that site up and then tie it in.
You say putting that site up.
Tower building that house. Yes, tower building.
Who exactly will be paid for that?
Well, it would be either the county or.
I just want to make that clear so that everybody understands.
Absolutely, yes. So, it would be the county, or if you partner with the state, they might be willing to help out with some of that cost. Because the area that we don't cover the greatest is Roanoke State Park. It's a state park. That site would be a benefit to safety, North Carolina, Roanoke, everybody in this area. So, I think TAC would be, I would absolutely sit down with them and it would kind of help, hopefully fund that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Collins. Anybody else? Okay, then we will move on to the next speakers. And that will be the final words from the vendors. And I'll ask them to keep it to five minutes each. And I believe last time I led Communications International Group, so today, I'm going to ask Scott Timbo, and he will go first with his time on comments.
Thank you, Art, very much. I'm not trying not to take the whole five minutes because I know it is Friday night. So, Madam Chair, thank you, commissioners. Thank you very much, safety officials. I really do appreciate it, especially on a Friday night. I know y'all spent some time on this and doing your due diligence, having worked in public safety. I really do appreciate what you all do. Basically, and I'll just be brief, but if you're looking at the systems and you're saying they're equal today, right? They're not. There is a difference. But if you're looking, your eyes are different. Just a couple of things to consider. Number one is, I work directly for Motorola. I work directly for the manufacturer. I'm not a third-party reseller out of the state of Florida selling products from a company in New Zealand. We have a huge footprint in the state of Tennessee. My territory vice president lives in Tennessee. Engineers that are designing the system or would design the system live in Tennessee. Project managers live in Tennessee. So, your system would be designed, maintained, implemented with people, folks that live in Tennessee. There are two full-time Motorola technicians that live in the Tri-Cities area, thirty minutes away, two. There's also a TAC and state technician that lives in the area. That's three full-time technicians that live just in this area alone to help Mr. Riddings along as backup or whatever. There's also three service shops within a two-hour radius that can come on-site. That's a ton of resources just within the state of Tennessee. To me, that's huge. You can't put that down in an RFP. Our system is P-25. I'm not going to go into the technical aspects, but that's the standard for public safety communications. Systems hardened, redundancy, all that stuff. For us, it's a partnership. We're not going to sell you a system and leave. We are embedded within the state of Tennessee and this Tri-Cities area. It's a partnership between TAC and Motorola and hopefully Carter County. I've done a lot of these projects. I've never had one municipality come to me and say, Scott, how can we get off of TAC? In fact, I've had a standalone Motorola customer that was a standalone system. And they saw the value and joined in TAC. And they joined TAC and got rid of their master site next to Johnson City. And that's even when there was fees involved. So, they saw the benefit of that, right? Couple of other things is, yeah, Mr. Riddings probably going to be great for you guys. That's awesome. But he will want to take some vacation. He will want to be sick or have to take sick days. It'll be great to have these additional resources to help back him up long term. I think that would be great. Interoperability, that term gets thrown around a lot, but this system is true interoperability. It's not a one-way path across systems. It is true interoperability. You'll be able to talk with all these counties and cities around you, Washington County, Sullivan County, Kingsport, Bristol, Johnson City, Green County, Greenville. You can't, that's just change the zone, change into Hocken. That's huge. Lastly, we want to design a system that sets you guys up for the next twenty years, not something that sets you up the next five, six years. That's why partnering with the state is huge. You all saw the benefit of that when we were here at the last meeting. Join in with that group that was doing a training center, higher education. You guys get the land, you get with them, you maximize it, right? That's exactly what we're doing with this state. That's what the state radio system. It's maximizing resources, joining together to do that. And because you do that, no maintenance costs and no software upgrades. As you know, software upgrades are important. You change out your laptops every four years. You change out your phones every two. You're going to have maintenance costs and you're going to have upgrade costs without going to another system. That's just a fact. You don't have to worry about that with TAC. And lastly, we're fortunate enough to be chosen. I mean, I would sit down with each agency to get specific needs. Because police doesn't do what fire does. Fire doesn't do what EMS does. EMS doesn't do what rescue squad does and so on. And I say that because there's been discussions between a public safety radio and non-public safety radio. There's still differences within the disciplines, right? And then the last thing is, the resources that the state has, they have what's called a sign-on wheels. Actually, they have two of them. So, if there is an incident where you're doing like a search in Roanoke, they can come out there, throw up that site and give you coverage. They did in Hawkins County for that missing girl there. Pre-planned events, if you had a dignitary come and speak at a school, that happened in Big Bend County. They can come out and set the sow up, give you coverage in that school. And they did that in Big Bend when the president came and spoke. So, those are just some things that are long-term to think about. It's not a decision you're making today. It's something that sets you up for the next twenty years. And we want to be that partner all the way right down the road. But again, I just want to tell you, I appreciate you all giving up your Friday night. People don't realize the work that you all put in and you all put in to make things like this happen. So, thank you very much. I'm just, I'm honored that you allowed me to come back.
Thank you, Commissioner Riddings. All right. Wayne. Wayne Pharaoh with Communications International.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't realize I was on the pocket, but thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to address you. So, again, along with what Scott said, you know, we are a land-mobile radio systems integrator. While the company is not based here, I am based and lived in the state of Tennessee for thirty years, supporting a lot of systems throughout the state. We recently were awarded Sumner County a couple of years ago. There are people who do make choices to go with other options other than the TAC and network because of different reasons. And we spent the past, I want to say, two and a half, three years with a lot of folks in your public safety office, asking them what their needs were and assessing those needs. We didn't just show up one day and throw a solution at you. We took your input and we actually presented the various technologies that were available to you. And this is what, you came back to us with an RFP, which you wanted. And we responded twice. And happy to do that. And that's part of what we do is we educate folks as to their options. You know, TAC is a good solution for some counties in the state, not so much for others. Things you need to consider are how do you get coverage inside of your buildings? And we've addressed that with what Brian Steff addressed earlier was the need of a repeater. That device goes into every apparatus, every police car, every fire truck, to allow your firefighters to go inside the building, to allow your police officers and your sheriff's deputies to go inside a building. And the system that we're competing against is not designed that way. You're going to be, you're going to wind up, in the case where some other counties that we've spoken to, wind up with a short, they're kind of short on the coverage that they were expecting. So, we designed the system to meet your needs. You will have that interoperability with those agencies that you've addressed, which are state of Tennessee, TAC and the North Carolina Piper, the U.S. Forestry, and there was one other neighboring agency. I can't remember. But we've addressed everything that you asked us to do. We've taken your input from your users. We didn't do this, you know, on a whim. We came up with a solution based on what you asked us to do and helped you get to come up with a design that makes sense. For a lot, like I said, for a lot of counties, it makes a lot of sense. But again, not only sense, but it makes dollars when you start talking about the TAC and solution. Very expensive solution for counties who have the money to do that kind of thing. As I pointed out in a recent letter to Chairwoman Holdren, the average life expectancy of a two-way radio is about seven years. So, you think the cost of the radio that we presented is $1,200. And you have to replace those in seven years versus the average cost of a TAC and radio being about $4,000, $3,800, $4,000. It's a whole million dollars dealt if you use that on it, based on the eight-hundred-plus radios that you need. So, when you talk about long-term cost of ownership and those types of things, you need to factor that kind of thing. And so, all that said is, you know, we came in with a design that we felt met your needs because that's what we had gleaned from our discussions with your folks. And that's what we provided. So, again, thank you for the opportunity to participate. I'm here to answer questions if you have any. But, you know, we hope that this is going to have to work out for all of us. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, sir. I want to pick up a little something here before we hear from the users of the communication system. I have been leaning on Billy Harold for the past several weeks to help me get out communication to all the stakeholders. And I have tried to say communication with them as best I could myself. And I just want to thank him and thank all of them for all the extra time that you and I were not here meeting. They were meeting. They were discussing, researching, talking. And so, you know, I just want to thank the commission for allowing us these extra two weeks to do more research and to have talks like that. And I want to thank all of, I think it's all men, so I'm going to say the word man, all the men who participated in those conversations recently. And I'm breaking from what I wrote down just a little bit. I had the request of Director Billy Harold. So, instead of calling up these groups, I'm just going to ask, if you're here representing this group, will you please stand and remain standing until Billy Harold gets to the podium? Nine-one-one. If anybody's here for nine-one-one, thank you. The city fire department. The city police department. The city street department. Constables. The county fire departments. The county sheriff's department. EMA. EMS. All right. Have I missed anyone that has been in this group of meetings? Yeah, they're on the list, but they, you all have not attended a meeting, is my understanding.
No, ma'am.
Okay, so I'm going to reserve comments for them in just a minute. But now, Billy Harold, you will come representing this group of people that's standing to your left. He has something to say.
Thank you, group. Over the past several weeks, all the agents that are standing here have had several meetings. None of us claim to be an expert on this. And it's been very stressful for all of us. And I take this very serious. I take this very serious. And I'm sorry. It's been very stressful on all of us. I've come to the conclusion tonight at our final meeting that we have decided everyone standing here and everyone that's been a part of the.
that we have decided, everyone standing here and everyone that's been a part of these meetings, we have considered the burden on the taxpayers if we go with the communications project due to the upkeep and the maintenance keep. We have considered that, I have considered that as a taxpayer of this county. I'm very concerned about the cost of that. So, all of us, we want to move forward, we want to move forward with the state. We don't want to be left behind in this project. If there's other counties around us getting state towers, we know that we're gonna be left behind. So, we understand that we will have, probably have another tower in Roan Mountain area to be able to talk with the state system, we know that. But I speak for everyone here tonight. We have all decided that we would prefer to go to the state system, to the TACAN system. And we understand that if we do go to the TACAN system, if that's chosen, we're still gonna need a continuous money flow in case there is problems come up with that. Okay, we have been working with the sheriff's department on this project. They have been willing in the past to continue to help fund this with their federal prison program. And we have spoken to the new sheriff that will be coming in. He's willing to back us on this project, and he's gonna speak in just a few minutes. But we want everybody to know that every agency, that we can't speak for the highway department and we can't speak for the bus garage. Every emergency agency and street department, we, we have all taken this very serious through several meetings. And we all, they have all asked me, we're all in, in agreement that we want to go to the TACAN system.
Thank you. And just for clarification, Director Harold, did you say that it was a unanimous decision?
This was a unanimous decision on the final meeting tonight. Everyone in this courtroom voted unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
And also, we did not have Mark in the meeting tonight. So we do not how he, we do not know how he's gonna go. We wasn't relying on him at all tonight. We voted on our own, he was not in the, in the office.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Before I answer any commissioner question right now, let me continue with our, our list. The only reason you all didn't hear me mention the county school classes or the highway department is because it was my understanding they weren't in those meetings. So, individually, I ask if anybody is here from the county bus garage or the school system.
Holdren, I just got a text, Mr. McRobbie thought it was at 5:30, he is on his way, and he has contacted Mr. McLean, and they have talked to other school systems and people about the radios, and he'll be here to represent them within the next five to 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bailey. Let me go on to the highway department then. If you all have an opinion, anything at all to say, we would love to hear it.
Yes, we do, we want to support the first responders on this and everything, so we wouldn't want to go to the state system.
Okay, and since we're waiting on the school system's representation, I'm gonna say that this is an opportunity for any other stakeholder that I may have left off the list inadvertently. If, if you're in the room with us tonight, we want to hear what you have to say as well.
My name's Mike Freyler, and I'm not the sheriff, I'm running for sheriff. I just won the Republican primary Tuesday night. Thank you all for allowing me to come into this, and I just want to be very brief. I want to work with all the first responders. I think everybody's in agreement on this, and I have a personal reason. I have had to use that radio for some of my life. And when you guys vote on this tonight, think about these officers, these firefighters, these EMTs that are out there. It's a life of. And I want everybody to work together, and I support their decision, and I will work with you. First of all, and foremost, I want to thank you for making me be able to speak tonight. But thank you for your time.
Is there any other stakeholder? Okay. The only other thing left to do is to hear the communications officer recommendation. So... I guess let's just take a short, if you can hear. Oh, you want to speak, sir, yes, go ahead.
I just want to make a quick clarification. As far as why we didn't include the highway department or the school bus garage is a, we, I took and other first responders took the suggestion, you know, from, from the last meeting. You know, I heard that it was, we want to hear from the firefighters, the EMS, sheriff's office, the police department. I took that from the first responders. Mainly, you know, we're working mainly on scenes from handhelds, radios and all that. So, you know, if that handheld radio's working everywhere, we know that vehicle's gonna want to work too. So, there wasn't any, that, that was the, that was the direction that, that we took, that I took. And, and, you know, we had those meetings, we had, I think, if I didn't miscount, we had about six meetings over the last couple, after the last couple of weeks. So, so we didn't intentionally leave anybody out of that. We just, we just were, were working as the, you know, the public safety group that, you know, answering those 911 calls and are out working from a handheld radio. We know if the handheld works, the, the radio, primary vehicle will work too. I just want to clarify that, thank you.
Thank you, chief. So, we, we didn't think they were intentionally left out. So, we want, we want to hear from all, and at this point, we almost have Dr. McRobbie, you're the only stakeholder left, I believe, in the room to have the voice, the recommendation. So if you would like to, now's the time.
Absolutely. I talked with the people that deal with that the most, and they sent the statement. Said that when they investigated about 84 of the county's uses, so that's what they recommended going with.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, so that commissioners gets us through our list of all stakeholders. So, we now will hear from Mr. Mark Robbins, what his recommendation is.
Our recommendation, not been taken very lightly. I had a lot of information that I had to go through and discuss, and I had a lot of questions I had to ask from all people involved. And I've had separate meetings, not, not this one today, but some other meetings with these people. And I've also come to the consensus that we're looking to go with the state system, with the TACAN system. We know that there's going to be a build-out process, and we also are aware that there may be another tower site needed to build this out and to get the coverage, so we're going into that, knowing that we'll have that. So... That's my recommendation.
All right. Commissioners, the floor is now yours. If, if anyone does have a question remaining, or anybody that's here tonight, commissioners, you may address them directly, or the floor is open for motions or any action that you choose to take tonight.
Go with the state system.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mark Blavens, second by Willie Campbell, to move forward with the numbers that we have from the state system. We are now in discussion, I'm gonna call on Vice Chairman Travis Hill.
Would Mr. Blavens take a fairly amendment to fund that out, the ARP money?
Big five.
Okay, the amendment is accepted. Commissioner Bailey?
Will we not have to vote down the RFP first, since that was already put on the floor as what was roped? I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking. Attorney Arden?
Yes, I mean, I think you could add that language to the motion, I think it's implicit in the motion, but you should add formally reject the bid from Communications International.
Mr. Blavens, will you take the amendment that we actually turned down CI's ARP to that?
Yes.
Okay, so with these two additions, Mr. Blavens, will you restate the motion with the additions that we just had?
Well, I was recommending we use the stated additions that were the recommendation Mr. Ellis gave that we take it out of ARP by the end. Gary Bailey.
That we withdraw and reject the CI.
We withdraw the RFP.
We need to say formally reject that it's submitted by Communications International.
We formally reject that it's moved by Communications International.
Okay, so now that it's amended, Commissioner Campbell, will you accept these amendments? Do you still want to second that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, we still have a motion and a second then. It has been repeated. Does anybody have questions or further discussion?
Do we not need a total amount? I mean, this kind of seems to me it's a little open for there. It's all talked out, or so to speak, I'm a little scared of this right now, because of the frame.
Okay, can we do this? Mr. Kidwell or Mr. Robbins, whichever one of you wants to address this. On top of your bid, it wasn't a, you know, it wasn't a proposal, but on top of the money that we know we're gonna be spending with you, how many additional dollars do you foresee us spending to get the Roan Mountain tower or anything else that you know we're gonna need?
I mean, I would not even feel comfortable with even suggesting a number. Because just depending on the location of it, what's needed. I mean, that kind of stuff, I would not, I mean, I could say a million, I could say 500,000, I could say 1.5. I really don't feel comfortable doing that. What we could do is, I mean, if you just want to work with us and we'll, you know, maybe to not exceed or something like that, we'll kind of work through that process.
Okay, I'd like to take note that Commissioner Coler has entered the ring, please. All right, Commissioner Gronsa.
My recommendation would be to state something along the lines of that we would, we are going to support, reserve the money for use for the Motorola radio project up to the, well, the 3.7, up to the 3.7, and continue to work with Motorola to determine a final amount and any additional necessary monies that would need to be appropriated. Because, you know, you're looking at adding a tower site, needs to be done correctly. You're talking about finding a location, having to buy that property. You're talking about a lot of things in the Roan Mountain area that would have to be done, plus the cost of the tower site. So, I think that, you know, we can't just say that we want to spend 3.7 million dollars and be done with it. We, we gotta, if we're gonna do it, just do it right, that way we don't have to do it again. So that we can start working with them, get actual numbers, because Chris has stated that he wants to meet with the office holders, get an actual number of radios to meet exactly what they need to, you know, and that's going to impact some. Because he was kind of guestimating on what, what we needed as a county. And then he can actually get us the final numbers as we start moving forward and making that person. The, the tower site's going to be something outside of the Motorola bid in and of itself. Without the, I think you included the, the actual site networking and everything like that in your, in your bid, so... I would kind of try to split that apart, I think, my opinion. For what I could...
Got it, and we could do that to, to Commissioner's point, we'll break out, we'll break out each agency, so you know specific agency. You'll know specifically what our side would be, if we need another side in the Roan Mountain, we can do that. So, commission and individual departments will know exactly how that's going to work. It moves either way up and down, we'll work with that process.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bailey.
This is a question for him, is there anybody here from the state? Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I know in the governor's budget, there was money wrote for rural with this. How much can you tell us was wrote in that, what you think we can expect? Because personally, we're gonna need more tires than somebody sitting in Nashville.
It was 178 million that got signed today, the budget hasn't been signed. There's, there's no set plan that's in place yet, but I will tell you this. It's in the best interest for the state to partner with every county because the system was built on interoperability, so it's not just a county, it's, it's agencies that surround the counties. It's any agency that rolls in, that provides support, it's outside state resources that come in. So when you look at the big picture, the, the plan is to provide that interoperability and connectivity throughout the state. And obviously, the partnership here has begun, and all we want to do is build on that. Obviously, commitment, I can't tell you, but when you look at the big picture and you look outside the county, what surrounds you, there's a lot of area that is high priority for state tourism. There's parks, there's a, that blocks a trail, and then there's a lot of areas for interoperability here for potential interoperability incidents, not to mention our day-to-day state agencies.
You know, second part to that, now just kind of leading, asking a question part of that then, I guess, is, why put 178 million in the budget to upgrade something? To me, it'd be more going to the rural section where you wouldn't have coverage than it would be down there in the flat section, is that a better?
Right, so it's, it's a look, the original plan was to look at statewide. So when they started building the system out, obviously, this was a phase, this was, this, the system was originally built from the very beginning for mobile coverage. And since then, it's begun to expand into more portable coverage. Some areas still mobile. It's to go out into these areas and expand it to increase that coverage in every county as we can. It's a lengthy process due to the terrain, the way the state is. But we're on the right path now, and with these partnerships we continue to build, that just increases it not just for, for example, Carter County, but it just increases it for state agencies, federal agencies, adjoining counties. Like I said, anytime there's help that rolls in, because you never know when you're gonna have an amber, you never know when you're gonna have a wildfire, you never know when you're gonna have a surge. Everybody says it's never gonna happen here, and we've already seen what's happened in this state. It's not for a missing child, it's not from a bombing, it's not from a wildfire. So it's, it's a great opportunity, like I said, to partnership and increase that ability. And the state's gonna look, obviously, we're, we're not just looking at the east, we're looking everywhere. But there's areas we need to concentrate on and work on that partnership, so... And we, real quick, we understand the investment. It's not just Carter. So you go back and you look at Chattanooga, and you look at Hamilton County's original investment in the creation of the TBRCS that tied in with the state. We're looking at millions and millions that they've invested, and it's continued to build out through all these other partnerships. So we recognize the importance that it is when a county provides infrastructure.
Yes, Commissioner Hanka?
As many people know in this room, health and welfare is charged with prioritization of ARP funds. We did meet last night, and the communication system is on that list at 3.7 million. There's a change in that figure that the committee needs to know because that will dictate what we do with some of the projects on that list. So, our next meeting will be the first Tuesday in June. Hopefully, we will finish all the priority at that time to send forward a financial management budget.
Thank you. I want to ask a question of the state. So, how do we buy a grant to, to ask the state to, to consider helping us with our new tower that is needed? Is that how we handle that?
So, no, it's just, we, we know right now Carter's in a position, they're moving forward. So it's in the planning process, once the budget's signed, we start looking at that expansion, we take into consideration. All right, we've got, infrastructure's being built out in Carter County, they need some additional support. We've got those areas of interoperability we need to provide. So, this is non-grant, this is 100% capital budget, capital funds out of state budget, so...
So, you're making as strong of a commitment as you can make without making a full commitment?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, like I said, it's a partnership, we don't, we want to provide, you're providing infrastructure for the state, and when I say the state, I mean state government. You look, everybody with forestry's on the system right now, state forestry. So when you, when we say that, we're looking at state resources, not to mention Dyersburg, something happens up here and you bring fire resource, EMS resource from Dyersburg. When they come here, they're on the system. So, that investment is really, when you look at it, it just reaches out and touches a lot of people. That's something we look at as a whole, that we take very seriously. We're, we're gonna work with you, that's, we need interoperability, we need, we need your help to make it happen. We're, we're going to work with you, that's, we need interoperability, and we need, we need your help to make it happen.
And I'm going to piggyback off of that, I'm not going to put you on the spot. But as an example, say, similar to what you did with the, the land and the state, being able to do the, what, the amount come to the state and say, hey, state, we'll do the tower and the building if you guys pay for the RFP infrastructure. Those, and kind of see where that land, right? So those are just kind of the things that you can take to the state, and then I'll let you all wrestle that out because that's without us. But when you do this process, basically, you have an MOU with the state understanding of how you, you know, you work, it's standard, everybody uses it. And then you just have a contract with us. But that would be a good example of a partnership that they've talked about doing is, hey, we know Carter County's moving forward, maybe you do this piece and we do this piece. So that's kind of some things that you can work with. If that helps kind of answer that.
It's like a non-committal question.
Yeah, it's, it's à la carte. So there are sites where we provide a generator, they provide a shelter, we provide a tower. Vice versa, it's à la carte, where it really comes down to it. It's all the situation and what's available. Work together.
Hey, Commissioner Coler.
Yeah, a little premature, but we build this site and the infrastructure. Is that something that you guys are just only have permission to? Or is this other third parties, can they attach to these sites or?
Good question. So when you look at it, obviously, state resources, because the state flips the bill that maintains it right. But let's just say Green County, Washington County, Sullivan County. You to determine if you want to give them access. Speaking, we like to do coverage, you know, beyond your county to give you the ability for the next tower ever. So when you cross county lines, you still have it. But it's all about managing resources, and it's all about working together. It's not going, no, you're not getting on my tower. Well, hold on, it's not that easy because what happens when you leap across the line, you're in the water. So it's something you work together, but yeah, it's just not, uh, here you go, everybody.
Yes, or no, it's basically a test.
It's all about managing, it's just like emergency management. It's managing resources. And radio is a resource.
Anyone else have a comment or question? Okay, I would like to ask for a recommendation on the amount of money. I think we need to add those words in there to this motion. If anybody can think of anything else, because, you know, nearing the end of four years here, and I've learned in that time that we have to be very, very careful in how we work these motions. We've got to think of everything. So I'm glad that somebody, Isaiah, reminded us of the money part. And I think that we need to take his suggestion and see if Commissioner Levins is willing to add that to his motion.
That's a big five, Mr. Trump.
Can I ask, can I ask a question here? We've, we've got a new communications officer. And have we set aside, we set aside for him, have we set aside any tools or anything that he may need? If we're going to do this, is there anything he may need that we could take out of this at the same time? I mean, I'm just, if we're going to fix the system, let's fix it right. I want to hear, I'm here from Al, I wish we'd have bought this one, now we don't have the money, so.
We haven't set anything aside in the budget, we weren't sure what all he's going to need. So it's going to kind of catch 22. Here, decide on what kind of tools he's going to need.
Is that something that can still be discussed?
Yeah, I don't think that needs to be part of tonight, frankly. I mean, this is about the two systems and what you're going with it, and not about equipping another county employee.
Thank you, Richard Carr.
All right, so let's keep Mr. Robins' job and his equipment separate. And I'm still going to say that for health and welfare's sake, for everyone's sake that's involved, let's try to put a maximum amount on this motion.
Well, far from three seven.
That doesn't include top.
3.9, that way it's 200,000 to start out with. That's 200 additional thousand.
Commissioner Hagan, is, if we're doing it out of APR, we've got to know exactly what it is, and it's going to be spent now. It's correct. You're correct, sir.
We have an end date on our ARP that we have to be committed to, and the guidelines on expanding those funds. And here we are, sitting in, and I will say from the serious time, the fourth month, to try to determine, even for the motion, how much it's called. Now, as recommended by our first responders and all to go with the state system, in that four months, there has not been one answer to any question. Now, they've had four months to get the price of the tire. The RFP has been out to everybody in the world. One bid, and only one quoted. And even with a quote, doesn't have the price to what it is to get the system to bid. Now, is that what we're going to look forward to if this commission goes with the state system? Are we always going to be waiting? Anybody from their side that knows numbers or engineering to put them together? Because every county government works the same. You have to commit your funds to what you have. It's almost embarrassing in a way that you come this far and expect to adopt one, and nobody can give you the dollar. And if it goes for a duration of time like here, our RFP, I mean, our ARP funds, the deadline will already pass, and we'll not be able to, we'll have to come out of our coffers. What will we have?
Yes, Commissioner Gronstath.
The only thing I'm going to add is, I, I don't know what their timeline is as far as being able to roll and what their equipment layover is. But it's, it should be a fairly quick turnaround once the equipment's in hand and the, the time is set aside to actually roll this out. Because basically, they're going to turn on Holston Tower, add a little bit of stuff there, turn on Holston, turn on Buffalo, and you could actually start putting radios out in the vehicles. The big piece is going to be what we're going to do with White Rock and what we're going to do with Rome Mountain. And that's something that's going to take some time and some additional engineering. Good location. So I mean, you could have your ARP expenditures pretty quick. And I think it's just a matter of a motion to, a motion to reject the RFP, get that out of the way, and then a motion to reserve up to 7 or 4 million dollars, whatever it is, and begin working with Motorola to determine the final amount and what, I don't want to say phases, because that's a big plan, but, and determine how pieces of this end up like. That would be mine. Force it. And then that way, we could, we'd start working on stuff.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We have a discussion. If Commissioner Levins wants to keep the motion as it is, then it's time for us to vote on that.
Let's go, Robert.
That's a motion with no possible help on this motion. Commissioner Coler.
Since I was unable to be here until late, could you repeat the motion, please?
Every time, every time we get down here, I strain, I fear, if you can't be here at 5 o'clock, don't come in here wanting to know something that's going on.
All right, let's, let's not go there, Commissioner Levins. Ms. Coler, I will attempt to restate the motion however you know I wasn't the one who made it. So the motion was to reject the, our, the proposal that we received from Communications International to choose to go with what we call the state system, which is Motorola Tackin. I'll forget the two amendments.
Money comes from ARP.
Yeah, money comes from the ARP funds. What was the second amendment? There's still one more thing. Is there, is that it?
Mine was the amendment to reject, if ever since the one to 3.7.
Okay, but, in fact, so Commissioner Levins did not accept the ask for a certain amount of money. Somebody said 3.9, and he said, no, he does not accept that.
I said 3.7, Mr. Trump.
Right.
Yeah.
So that is just their, that equipment price. It does not include a tower. And, and what I need you, anyone, to understand is, if we don't include more money for that tower in this motion right here, then the Health and Welfare Committee may not set aside any money at all over that 3.7. And then as Chairman, Commissioner Johnson said, then we would have to take the rest of that money out of our own fund balance.
Well, can I ask a question? Does anybody have any idea what one of these tires will cost? They were in four months.
Yes, let's listen to Attorney Harden for just a second, please.
I can't make a motion for your suggestion, okay? You all don't have a final number to vote on tonight. You cannot finally approve a proposal with, with an open-ended number. So as Mr. Gronstath was saying, my, my suggestion would be formally reject the bid submitted by Communications International. Move forward in good faith with Tackin Motorola based on their proposal to arrive at a final project cost and reserve some amount from the, from the ARP funds that you're choosing not to commit elsewhere, that you have to go forward with that. That, that's all you need to do. So if you've got funds in reserve, and you can work forward to get a final number, and come back and approve that number with an actual dollar.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, Commissioner Coler, do you still have a question?
No, I was going to thank you for explaining it and remind you that I voted against the meeting tonight because I knew I'd be late.
Okay, Commissioner Levins has withdrawn his motion. Commissioner Gronstath.
I make a motion that we formally reject the Communications International bid on the RFP.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Coler. Does anybody not understand what the motion on the floor is? Is this, um, is there any discussion needed on the rejection of the proposal from Communications International? No, we're rejecting Communications International, the one that wrote a response from proposal. Yes, we're in discussion, Ms. Lynn.
I would just like to say, in light of Commissioner Johnson's words about the extra money that we don't know about, that also, if you read the RFP, you read their, their whole proposal from CI, there was a whole lot of assumptions, a lot of assumptions, that we had to pay for. So there was going to be extra money regardless. You know, with all the extras that they needed, that we had to fit the bill for, it may have added up to the same amount as one tire, so.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Campbell.
What's a 200-foot tower? 180. 180, 60. About 200,000 for a 200-foot tower? Roughly, just, I mean, material costs of skywreck, it's ridiculous.
Doesn't include land or?
Buildings, roughly.
Hang on just a second. We've got a motion on the floor that does not have anything to do with money right now. So can we concede a discussion on the motion on the floor, which is just to reject Communication International's submission? All right, we're going to call for the vote, Ms. Page.
Willie Campbell.
Yes.
Mark Levins.
Yes.
Al Reddick.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Michael Miller, Julie Gwynn.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Caster.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon. Isaiah Grinsteig.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet.
Yes.
Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Layla Ward.
Yes.
Andrew Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yes.
Gary Bailey.
Yeah.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Andrew Coler.
Yes.
Daniel McIntyre. Aaron Frazier.
abstained.
Robert McCamey.
Yes.
John Collins.
Yes.
Tom's Prophet.
Yes.
All of our two passes except we did have one extension, and I just want to point that out. Mr. Frazier abstained.
I abstained.
It's okay. Eric did a lot of work on this, so he is trying to remain neutral. That's what's going on there, okay? All right, so that motion passed. The floor is yours again. Is there any other motion you want to make tonight?
I make the motion to negotiations with Tackin, trying to try to get a price as quick as we can.
Okay, so your motion is to move forward with the state's system, Motorola Tackin, allowing them to come back to us with more pricing involved for the power and anything else that might be left out at this point.
Second.
Did I hear you correctly, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Okay, and the second is coming from Jerry Prophet.
I'll go on in.
Any discussion? Yes, it's Collins.
How soon can you get us the prices because this money needs to be decided on?
Well, however this turns out this evening, I'll be with Mr. Harold, whoever you designate, to give me contacts for all the agencies. And within the next couple of weeks, I'll just, I'll live up here. I'll get another, I've got one of our service guys who'll help me. Meet with all the agencies, get specifics, we'll do all that, we can do that pretty quick. We kind of have a general idea what we need at White Rock, and then we can start the process looking for that Rome mountain site. And then in that, maybe in that process too, you guys can be talking with Tackin in parallel, right? So, hey, what can you guys help us out with here? When we get those final numbers, you'll have a better idea. We can do that in the next, you know, month or so. And I, and I have two, I've, I've had experience with ARP, so please, I don't mind reaching out to somebody, whoever's lead on that. Moorestown, Hammond County used ARP funds, Coffey County used ARP funds. I worked with them on that, so if you need folks to reach out to to understand how they do that process, please.
Yes, Commissioner Collins.
Can you have that before first Tuesday in June?
I'll do my best, brother. I'll live up here in the next couple of weeks, I can, I'll definitely do that. The driver's side, the radio piece of it should be fairly simple, it'll be the infrastructure side. That, that'll be the goal. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Tidwell, just so you know, that is the next regular meeting of the Health and Welfare Committee, and they need to make decisions. This, this is going to be.
It's something very similar with Coffey, so no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, I was saying, who, who made this motion? I've already forgotten.
Gary.
Gary. Gary, will you please say it one more time, and we're going to try to vote?
I made the motion that we proceed forward with the state and them to get a quote to us as fast as they can. Get this working on the floor. More about late.
Okay, any other comments? All right, Gary, please call for the vote.
Willie Campbell. Mark Levins.
Yes.
Al Brecker.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Michael Miller, Julie Gwynn.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Caster.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon, Isaiah Grinsteig.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Layla Ward.
Yes.
Andrew Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yes.
Gary Bailey.
Yeah.
Travis Hill.
Yes. Yes.
Andrew Holger.
Aye.
Daniel McIntyre. Aaron Frazier.
Abstained.
Robert McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Comer.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet.
Yes.
One more statement, I'll raise the bar.
And motion passes. Unless you all have another motion to make, we have completed what was on our agenda for this evening, I believe.
Aye. Can you say something real quick, if you don't mind? I appreciate everybody, first of all, everybody that's been here to, to help us out on this. This is a huge decision that we're making, affects every one of us, all the taxpayers. Appreciate the presentations from Motorola and the other group, I think you skipped out here. Everybody's support on this, and their input, this is a big time. Thanks, everybody, for, for helping us out on this.
All right, we had a motion to adjourn by Gary Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jerry Prophet, on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Your special committee is again, thank you.
Thank you, good night.